Roco?
Suarez, Cohen, Maniscalco, Capin.
Present.
Miranda.
Here.
Vera and Reddick.
Here. All right, Stan, number one.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I guess we're doing number two?
Number two, yeah.
Number two, okay.
Yeah, number two, I'm sorry.
Just making sure. We have three plan amendments tonight. Two are transmittal and one is just a regular public hearing. The first one tonight is Plan Amendment 1816. Again, my name's David Hay with the Planning Commission staff. This plan amendment is located within the central Tampa Planning District. It is just south of the main University of Tampa campus. They have acquired property along Kennedy that we'll be showing you shortly. Here is that aerial. Again, here is the main campus. This is Kennedy coming in from downtown, where it does the curb at Grand Central and then goes down further west, heading out toward West Shore. You've got, these are the railroad tracks that are at the back of the university. This is North Boulevard running up through the center, and then Cass is up at the northern part. The red parcels have been acquired by the university over years, and they're bringing it to unify it under a public quasi-public land use. It is privately initiated by the university. It is a regular amendment, so it does need to be transmitted up to the state. It is, the accumulated parcels equal 15.77 acres. There's three land use categories: regional mixed-use 100, the urban mixed-use 60, and there's some recreation open space on there. Again, they're looking at going to that public, semi-public. We'll just take some quick photos around the subject site. This is the corner of North Willow Avenue and West Kennedy Boulevard. Kennedy Boulevard is here on the right. The railroad tracks and where Willow meets are right off the picture to the left. Here, we're on Willow Avenue, facing toward the main campus, toward the east. Kennedy would be off-frame to the right. You can see the lights of the lacrosse field and the railroad tracks are right behind this parcel here. Here, we're moving up Willow. You could see we're looking east across, again, those railroad tracks toward the lacrosse field. This parcel is part of that plan amendment. Then we're going to go through some of the parcels that they've acquired. This is the intersection of West North A Street and North Edison Avenue. Here, we have the parking lot at North Boulevard and West Kennedy that they've recently completed a couple of years ago. Here's the Edison Building, and this is North Boulevard. Again, the main part of the campus is off on the right there. Here, we have the future land use map. You can see the subject site has those three future land use categories. The reddish is that regional mixed-use 100. That's the most intensive outside of downtown. The pink is that urban mixed-use 60, and then there's that recreation open space parcel. Again, this is Kennedy, Willow, North Boulevard going through the center there. Here's the future land use map if this plan amendment is finally adopted. You can see all the parcels are to that blue color, which is that public, semi-public land use category. Overall, the existing maximum density that could be considered for those parcels is 1,073 units or 2,154,000 square feet of non-residential. Under the public quasi-public, there is no maximum fluria ratio. It's guided by compatibility with the surrounding development pattern, so any rezonings that would come in, we would be looking at that existing pattern and that the new pattern would need to mimic the existing. And again, this does represent the appropriate category for churches and hospitals, schools, and the university would fit under that category. Your planning commission found it consistent with policies supporting our public uses, including colleges and universities. It does recognize that the central planning district, that the university is, is our main growth area and also main area for institutional uses. And there are policies within the comp plan that talk about that these uses need to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, which the planning commission did deem it consistent. So therefore, our recommendation to you tonight is to find 1816 consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Hay, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you actually doing number three right now?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. So, just for clarification, then we'll come back to number two?
Yes, sorry about that, yes. I was so used to doing them in numerical order. Yes, this is 1816, number three. So, sorry about that.
Two comes before three.
Yeah, number three.
Just kidding, you're just...
Number three. 1816, and then we'll go back to the fill. But that concludes my presentation on the wrong amendment, so, there we go. So, if you have any questions, just let me know.
All right, any questions for Stan? All right, go to the public.
Good evening, Morris Massey with Hillward Henderson 101. He's Kennedy Boulevard Suite 3700 here in Tampa on behalf of the University of Tampa. Mr. Hay has described the purpose of the number three comp plan amendment. Most of the campus is already public, semi-public, has that future land use. We're trying to bring the remainder of the campus, portions of which have been owned by the university for several years, under the same future land use category to help with the redevelopment of certain areas on the campus. I'm happy to answer any questions. One last thing, one of the parcels involved in this future land use amendment is the former location of the Barksdale Center. I spoke to you all about that when we were talking about the dedicated parks ordinance last week, I believe. And I thought that there was a motion made by you all to ask legal to correct the address because the Barksdale Center is down, then moved to Lincoln Avenue. If you all, when the action agenda came out, there was no such motion shown on the action agenda. So if you could please clarify that, make that motion tonight, I'd appreciate it. I've been working with Rebecca Kurt, the legal department already on that.
What do you want the motion to say?
The Barksdale Center.
Correct the address to the Barksdale Center. The former, the former location of the Barksdale Center back before 1999 was on the UT campus, basically, and now it's been moved to Lincoln Avenue.
If I can, and to further clarify, Mr. Chairman, members of council, currently, because that address has not been changed, the Barksdale address with that, with the address that is before council today, still shows in your ordinances, Section 1691, your list of dedicated parks, so that needs to be corrected.
And that's, that's the motion I would ask, is that you, you ask legal to prepare an ordinance correcting the address of the Barksdale Center.
Any question? Anyone in the public which should speak on item number three?
Move to close.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. I want to figure that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both? All right, do you need to do a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with the Barksdale Center being corrected, hopefully that we have to make a motion, I believe, to correct the Barksdale Center first.
Well, I've also been reminded, this is a transmittal public hearing, so the motion would be to transmit, and certainly by the time it comes back to city council, then on your motion, it would be able to be prepared before...
Move to transmit.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. I want to figure that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those both? All right, the motion carried.
Motion carried, with Suarez being absent.
And then, do we need a second motion for the... Go ahead.
I was going to ask the legal department to draft the proper documents to make sure that the Barksdale Center reflects the current address, which is just somewhere in the southern area of McCollum Park on Lincoln Avenue, and that this, in fact, when this was the Barksdale Center, one of the famous groups of bands was there, the Fabulous Rockers.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. I want to discuss you on the motion. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those both? All right. Move to item number two.
Back to two, sorry about that again. Again, David Hay, Planning Commission staff. The next item for your review is 1818, a text amendment, so this is another transmittal hearing. This is in regards to the fill policies. A little background, this was publicly initiated by you all at Tampa City Council. Your motion directed the staff to provide policy language on future land use categories requested on water. Your planning commission staff has worked closely with the staffs of EPC, the legal department, the Port Authority, and land development to work on this language that we bring forward this evening. There are a few areas that it really focuses on. It limits the future land use designations on surface waters to the environmentally sensitive ESA land use category unless meeting certain requirements, things such as public uses and things like that. It prohibits fill on surface waters unless meeting, again, certain requirements. Those are similar to the ones listed previously. The language adds definitions for incidental fill, man-made water bodies, and surface waters, and also modifies the existing definition of overriding public interest. Planning Commission reviewed the comprehensive plan and found that the proposed language to add additional policy direction regarding the appropriateness of fill consistent with the adopted policy guidance within the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Your planning commission found a number of policies dealing with the protection of wetlands, marine habitat, natural areas on lake shorelines, beach and dune systems protections, and water quality. The proposed language will further the protection of these areas and will also provide clearer outcomes and expectations during any proposed future land use map amendment. So based on that, the recommendation from the planning commission is to find TACPA 1818 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. Myself, Sean College, Kristin Moore with City Legal, EPC staff is also here, so if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. Thank you very much.
Any question from staff, from council? Anyone in staff which should come in?
Kristin Moore, Legal Department. As Mr. Hay stated, we worked very closely together with himself, as well as Mr. College, EPC, and the Tampa Port Authority. We feel the language in front of you is an excellent clarification of the current policies in the comprehensive plan, and we would encourage you to transmit it this evening.
Any question from council?
Steve McAleny. You remember, this came up as a result of the petition to fill Rocky Point, the basin at Rocky Point. We'd like to thank the council and the staff for working so diligently to bring this forward, and we recommend that you transmit. Thank you.
Anyone in the public which should speak on item number two?
Move to close.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco. I want to figure that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those both?
Move to transmit.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Miranda. Transmit, all in favor, that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Number three, four.
All right. Onto our last amendment for the evening. This is TACPA 1817. This amendment is located in the West Shore Planning District. It's also within the boundaries of the West Shore Business Center. It's also located within the boundaries of the West Shore Palms neighborhood. Here, we have an aerial of the subject site. Of course, this is Kennedy Boulevard. You have West Shore. Of course, this is West Shore Plaza here. This is the Walgreens right at the corner of Kennedy and West Shore. This parcel is behind that Walgreens on North A. It's roughly .2 acres in size. You can see all the commercial, and then the West Shore Palms area has been transitioning more into, more of a single-family attached and multifamily neighborhood. Again, this is a privately initiated plan amendment. It is small scale, again, approximately .2 acres in size. Currently, it's designated that residential 35, future land use category. The applicant is seeking to go to the community mixed-use 35 category. Here, we'll have some pictures. Here, we're looking north from North A Street. The subject site is over here on the left. This is the building immediately to the east of the subject site. It's a, looks like a house, but it's actually, there's a sign up front. It's an office. Here, we're on North A Street, looking north. This is the subject site here. You can see the alley and the townhomes in the back up on North B, behind these trees, but you can see the site is currently vacant. Behind this fence here, this is the Florida Blue Building out on West Shore. Give us some reference. Here, we're looking east down North A Street. The subject site is off-frame to the left. You can see a lot of this is office development, and then these are commercial uses associated with the uses up on Kennedy. Then, here, we're looking west down North A Street. The subject site is over here on the right. You can see we're looking toward West Shore Plaza. This is the Walgreens just to the south of the subject site. There's the Walgreens again, looking more southwest. The Intercontinental is behind that. Here, we move up on the north side of the subject site. We're looking east down the alley that's in the back. These are the townhomes that access the alley, and this is the subject site. This wooded area right on the right there is the back of the subject site. Here, we have the existing future land use map. It's kind of hard to see, but the subject site and all this brown is that regional, sorry, the residential 35. The reddish color that's to the south and directly to the west is that regional mixed-use 100, and then as you go east of Trac, it goes down to a residential 20, and it stays urban mixed-use 60 along portions of Kennedy Boulevard. If this plan amendment is approved, the subject site would go, it's hard to see, but that site would be the community mixed-use 35, future land use category. The maximum intensity and density, the density would remain the same. Under the residential 35, a maximum of seven units can be considered. That is the same under the community mixed-use 35. The differences start, under the residential 35, a maximum of 5,325 square feet can be considered. That non-residential square footage would increase to a maximum of 17,424 square feet. One of the other differences is residential uses would be allowed in that mixed-use category under the maximum square footage. They're allowed whatever is more beneficial to the applicant. They can use either one for residential development. It would also introduce the potential of the commercial general zoning district on that block, on that parcel. We always send these out for agency reviews. None had any concerns. There was one note just stating that both Coleman Middle and Plant High School are, do not have capacity at this moment. It should be noted that it is not a concurrency determination. A concurrency review will take place prior to the preliminary plat or site plan approval. It's just an informational-only comment. Your planning commission did find this request consistent with a number of comprehensive plan policies. There's policy language that promotes a mixture of uses, especially within the city's employment centers. This, of course, has been identified as the West Shore Business Center. There's also policies dealing with promoting infill development, especially within proximity transit and employment services. This is right next to West Shore Plaza. So based on all that, your planning commission recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Gina Grimes with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, and I'm here tonight representing Zukowski USA. They are the owners of the subject property right now. As you heard from David, it's currently got a comp plan category of R35, and it's got a zoning of PD. And the existing zoning for the PD was approved back in 1981, so it's a fairly old rezoning, and it allows a very low-intensity office use of 3,000 square feet. So, we would like to amend the comp plan from the R35 to the CMU 35 to allow us to apply for a rezoning for a larger office development there on that site. And as you know, if the comp plan amendment is approved, the rezoning would be evaluated for all the specifics dealing with the access and the buffering and so forth. We think the comp plan amendment is appropriate for a couple different reasons. The first reason is that, as you've, as David's noted, that the site is immediately adjacent to the RMU 100 comp plan category, which is the area in the pink, purple. The RMU 100 is the most intense comp plan category that you have in the city, other than downtown. And then, this subject parcel is R35. Well, the RM, the RMU 100 allows a 3.5 FAR, but the current comp plan category of R35 only allows a .6 FAR. So there's a big discrepancy between the FAR allowed right here and then what's allowed immediately adjacent. We think that by proposing the CMU 35, not only will be, will be increasing the FAR to an FAR that's more of a transition from the RMU 100 at 3.5 to the CMU, which we're proposing for this site at 2.0, then down to the R35, which is a .6. So, you're supposed to, at these major, on major streets like this, usually the most intense development is right on that major street, and then it, then it transitions down to less intense development as you go further back into the neighborhood. And we think this accomplishes that because it reduces, it increases the current intensity, but it doesn't increase it as high as it is on the, on the actual West Shore Boulevard. but it doesn't increase it as high as it is on the, on the actual West Shore Boulevard. We also think that it is appropriate because it's consistent with the existing development pattern and the uses. And I, I'm going to use some of David's pictures to show you what I mean. He mentioned that it's immediately adjacent or to the, to the east of the, of the Florida Blue, and this is standing right on North A Street, looking north. This is Florida Blue, so you can see it's parking right in here, and then this is the subject site. So it'll be, this, our proposed office development, if this comp plan amendment is approved, will be immediately adjacent to a parking lot. To the south, so standing on the site and looking south, you're looking at the back of the Walgreens. And then, as you can see, that actually, I've, I've been out there a couple times. There's usually service vehicles and trucks, delivery vehicles that kind of use North A to service some of those uses. And then, as David showed you, the third side also, the third side of the site is also adjacent to an existing office development, which obviously would be compatible with what we're proposing. And then I just want to point out to the north where they have, this is an alley. We're looking east down an alley that's on the north boundary of our site. But I want to note that even though it is residential, these are the backs of the garages to the, to the residential units that face North B Street. So it's going to have very little impact, especially if it's an office development to those residential uses. As David mentioned, both the city and the Planning Commission and the city staff have recommended approval or no objection. He brought up the comment about the school concurrency. Well, given that we're proposing to do an office development, it's not going to generate any residents or any students that would be affected by the limitation on the capacity at Coleman and Plant. So it's even more appropriate for that reason. So with all that, we would request your approval of this comp plan amendment.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Anyone in public which to speak on item number four?
Move the applause.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Manaschak, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else?
Move, transmit.
No, I think it's an adoption.
Adoption. Yeah.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Manaschak, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else to come before us during this session? All right, we stand recess at six o'clock.
Yeah.
That was a pretty hard one. Strike from the back of the head. And if you're confused there, you don't feel good. If I'm thinking maybe push him to the back there. You could see the subtle. Is it just them or is it? Do you think maybe there's more? It's only city and their label.
I think it's just staying there.
Illegal state. I can see a cold right.
I can't figure out if this is allergies or. And my kids have cold. I have that.
The year. The year that I taught. She was here last year.
No.
I was sick. I'm tired.
I was nonstop sick at first.
I'm sore throat. Sinus infection.
Yeah.
The monitoring office.
That was.
Well, almost. You know, I was seven months, eight months in school. I was probably seven.
Yeah.
I sent one of the kids to the cafeteria. I just felt a nervous. And you cover by far.
Yeah, I see.
It's not always a leak.
Why my kids.
What? And I said, you know, as a teacher, you can't leave the classroom.
Yeah, and I had a ton of various and thundery illnesses for my two children. And most of them, I would say after my second was about six years. Kind of stellar. But I'm sort of having four marriages. So I don't know if that's a business. Could be.
I'm a rock. This is a bad time.
Yeah, true. I have a terrible. And I can't. Much. Okay, I'm quite clear right now.
Well, we're. Also, I'm happy with my age and I am gearing up to. I was going to be a family for you. He's my family. Still all these like. Then the mind there. Very tough. She's been here.
Oh.
All right, tense. Yeah.
Because my father's. He was slow anyway because he was short span. Oh, thanks for telling me. I don't know what to do about another case. It's just perplexing me. I have an unused alley. She had a son. I was celebrating. She closure. Milk on it. It's an active avenue, but it's. It's a. It's not the past. It's been there. Maybe thirty years. Long time. As long as I'm. And maybe site. He just. Code. Like the citation. We don't. If they make the. Even if I grant. Doesn't solve my structure. I can't. The structure. Because then here with the parking is driven by S two. It's like a troll. So I can't change that.
Right.
I just. You know, like still fastest. Get an approach. Solid waste. She's hot. She's. She's what? We just sell any. I don't know where I'm at.
Oh, yeah, I told her. Yeah, I told her.
When they tear it down, they got no place to put it. Which if we can't do that, I mean, that's another.
Right.
Violation.
Right.
Nobody, nobody on the other side was complaining about the location.
Right.
This is. Not done well. And then you go. The alley.
No, I heard you.
Sure. He just motion is. Read the citation. And I sat down.
Hey, Ryan. Mark, how you doing?
You here for me?
You know what help you can get, bro?
Hey, I'm just asking. You know, I helped you on your zoning, so I figured you're going to help me out on my alcohol. Make sure I do it right.
I learned from you.
Oh, jeez.
The whole thing is a whisper.
Yeah. Why wouldn't it? It's just an adjustment for the outside dining. They already had the inside. Oh, I got it. He just decides to pull it while there. So it's just so. I got it.
Yes, sir.
It's not certified by the staff. I want to go. I want to. They didn't do their job. Okay. You got to go. With him. You got to sit down.
No, no, he just showed up because it's got.
No, that's what they want. What brings you down? You're here to help us?
You better come over here, see, because I don't think the TV can pick you up.
It's all right.
I'm sure you get. I'm sure you get Facebook.
Are we gonna?
I only get a couple of seconds anyway, so hopefully I'm in and out of here.
Are we gonna be entertained by one of your PowerPoints?
No PowerPoint. No shows.
Oh, really?
You got music?
No shows. No shows. I'll sing. I'll be singing.
Okay. Are you the new canter?
I don't, I don't do religion.
Sure, it's in state. You know that. Built by associate. Me or him? He's within the sphere.
Kristen's moving. She can't take anymore of the happiness.
What's that? I should've just looked at the first one.
Before. The hearing is closed.
We're going to resume this evening meeting. Throw call, please.
Suarez, Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Capin.
President.
Miranda.
Here.
Vera. And Reddick.
Here. Mr. Miranda.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, may I ask for a motion for reconsideration, item number four.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Ms. Capin, I'll figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close.
Chairman, I, I move an ordinance presented for first reading consideration and ordinance amended to Tampa comprehensive plan, future land use map for property generally located in forty-six nineteen North A Street. From residential R thirty-five, R thirty-five to community mixed use R thirty-five, CMU R thirty-five, providing for repeal of all ordinance and conflict, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, I'll figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close.
Motion carried with Suarez being absent and Vera being absent, a vote, second reading and adoption will be on March twenty-first at nine thirty AM.
Could we open up?
So move. Chairman, move items five through nine.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, I'll figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close. All right, staff, we got a house cleaning. House cleaning. Anything?
Do I need to be sworn in first, Chair?
No.
All right, continue.
Do the house cleaning and then we'll be.
Let's answer. Items number eight and nine need to be continued to the March twenty-eighth evening public hearing at six PM. Revised site plans weren't turned in on time.
Repeat that again, item number?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
Can you second? You moved it, right?
Yes.
Did someone second it?
No.
You did. Oh, I'm second. Okay.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen, I'll figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close. Anything else?
That's at six PM, is that correct? Thank you.
All right, anyone?
Twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Anyone wishing to speak on item five through nine, please stand if you're sworn.
Mr. Ryan, do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, with item number four.
Good evening, Council, Ryman Assi, Land Development Coordination. Item before you is number, item number five for application AB two nineteen zero five. The property is located at two one seven South Del Maybury Highway. The current zoning on the property is PD and the future land use is CMU thirty-five. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. If approved on first reading, minor corrections to the site plan will be required before second reading. The petition before you is requesting a special use approval to allow the sale of alcohol beverages for a restaurant, beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises. There is an active AB sales ordinance, which is ordinance two thousand dash, I'm sorry, two thousand seven dash ninety-eight on the property for a four COPR, beer, wine, and liquor in connection with a restaurant. The petition before you is increasing the approved area by adding an outdoor area for AB sales. Rezoning eighteen ninety-six was approved for all CG uses and the restaurant isn't a previous restaurant space. It was before a payway. The total AB sales area is three thousand three hundred and twenty-one square feet, which contains three thousand eighteen square feet indoor and three hundred and three square feet outdoor. The required parking for the restaurant is point two five spaces per person and occupancy per the floor plan is a hundred and thirty-two people, which requires thirty-three parking spaces. The required parking for the entire site is seventy-six spaces. The property is within a mixed-use corridor village and the distance separation requirement is two hundred and fifty feet from residential uses and other AB sales establishments. Hours of operation are listed as Sunday through Wednesday, seven AM to eleven PM, and Thursday through Saturday, seven AM to two AM. The site plan states the sales area, sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space and no outdoor amplified sound after eleven PM. Also, the site plan states all permits issued after April first, two thousand and eleven, shall be kept on site, copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan for alcohol beverage sales. Land Development did find it inconsistent due to section twenty-seven one thirty-two, and that's to reduce the required distance separation to residential uses from two hundred and fifty feet to eighty feet. And again, section twenty-seven one thirty-two, to reduce the required distance separation to other AB sales establishments from two hundred and fifty feet to two hundred and six feet. The closest residential use is thirty-eight oh nine West Platt Street. It's zone PD, it's for condominiums, and it's eighty feet away. And the closest AB sales establishment is two 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 South Del Maybury. It's zone CG. It holds a four COPR and it's two hundred and six feet away. Excuse me. General planning and transit finding, findings found that Hart Route thirty-six typically runs weekdays from five AM to eleven oh nine PM and weekends from five fifty AM to ten fifty seven PM. The property is located in a mixed-use corridor village and along a transit emphasis corridor. And here's a vicinity map showing the, the area and the zonings around the property. This particular. And here's a vicinity map showing the, the area and the zonings around the property, this particular establishment's on the south corner of the property. The top picture's showing the front of, the front of the establishment, and this better shows you the strip center that's located in. Top picture is a side view of the parking area, this is to the south of the property, and the below picture's thirty-eight oh nine West Platt Street, Platt Street, which is the closest residential. Top picture is, uh, one-four-five South Del Maybury is a neighbor to the north, and then the south, uh, to the south, it's three oh one South Del Maybury, the, the fitness, uh, fitness center. Subject, uh, top picture is the rear of the subject's site, and this is the west view across Del Maybury. The site plan before you, and then I just wanted to put this up here, these are the corrections that are listed in the staff report that would be required between first and second reading, and T P D had no objection to the special use, uh, request. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
Any question from Council?
Just one. So, the two, um, waivers that, that, the, the two, um, objections from the staff are already existing conditions, correct?
They're, uh, due to the distance separation requirement.
But, so they, they exist for the, the license that's there now, the issue is that this would be adding outdoor space?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone in public wish to speak on item number five? Oh, I'm sorry, African, uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, good evening, Council, Steve Michelini, uh, I'm representing, uh, Chicho Cali, who's the petitioner here, um, for twenty-seventeen South Del Maybury. If you recall, a couple of months ago, uh, the, the rezoning application preceded this request that straightened out a number of other issues, including how much parking was there, uh, and what, how it was allocated to the various establishments. The restaurant is an existing establishment, um, it has an alcoholic beverage license and, and an alcoholic beverage zoning. What it doesn't have is a three hundred and three square feet patio for outside dining, and that's what we're changing to add that on to our application. Uh, it also, uh, you know, we meet the code regarding parking, so there are no waivers being requested. The, uh, the establishment, as, uh, Mr. Cohen has already pointed out, the waivers that were being requested are, are the existing waivers that were previously, uh, requested and approved under the other zoning application that exists now. So what we, we have to go back and when we're changing the zoning list, uh, for the alcohol, we have to request those waivers again. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions, it, it's a fairly straightforward proposal, it's an existing restaurant, and we're adding outside patio dining.
It's an existing restaurant, an existing alcoholic beverage, were the hours the same as you're posing?
This are consistent with, with the chapter.
No, it isn't, but I wanna know, is that the hours that were on the?
Ryan Manassi Land Development, uh, the previous, the active ordinance on file, it's per city code, so it'd be to chapter fourteen.
Okay, 'cause this says seven a.m. to eleven p.m. and then, uh, two a.m. on Saturday.
That's correct, the site plan has stated those hours of operation.
We're fine with chapter fourteen.
On the si, on the site plan, this is wrong.
We had originally committed to being consistent.
Oh, I know, I understand, this is the hours you're gonna open, even though we're, are, okay, got it, chapter.
But we're, we'll be consistent with chapter fourteen, we'll make that change.
Yeah, that's the way I'd like it to read, or I think it should be, is that.
That's fine.
You're, you're okay with that?
Wait, can, can I just? I think they tried to limit themselves because of concern about noise.
I saw that, I see that, I see that, so, but chapter thirteen, it covers it, so they're okay, covers out many hours. But I, that, that on the site plan, he's, they're okay with chapter, which is what he said is on the site plan, correct?
The, the proposed site plan before you stating hours of operation, the previ, the active ordinance on file right now states per city code. So, his petition's actually stating hours, so if you.
That's why I asked, were they the same, they're not the same then?
No, the, the active ordinance is per city code, and he's stating, uh, each day hours.
Because it was, it was assumed that it was the same, and it isn't the same. Yeah.
We went through several, uh, site plan reiterations, and we had committed to being consistent with chapter fourteen.
Okay.
But we don't have any difficulty at all putting that on the.
Between first and second reading?
Between first and second reading.
Thank you, what if?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, you, you did say no amplified music, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I think after eleven, right?
That's correct.
I thought I heard you say that, okay, sorry, thank you.
All right, any additional questions or comments from Council? All right, anyone in the public wish to speak on item number five?
Close, second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, I wanna figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close, uh, Mr. Vera.
I hereby move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving a special use permit as to for alcoholic beverage sales, restaurant consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at two-one-seven South Del Maybury Highway, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or repeal, uh, repealing ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven dash nine-eight, providing an effective date.
Second.
I got a motion.
And with the revision of the papers, the second reading.
We got a motion from Mr. Vera, second by Mr. Miranda, any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Council.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be March twenty-first, twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
All right, we go to item number six.
Good evening, Council, Ryan Manassi, City Tampa Land Development Coordination, the item before you is item number six, uh, application A B two nineteen zero six, located at one thousand one North MacDill Avenue, Suite A. The current zoning on the property is C G and the future land use is C M U thirty-five. Uh, the development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. Should you approve for first reading, there are minor corrections that would be required between, uh, before second reading. The petition before you is requesting a special use approval to allow the sale of alcohol beverages for a restaurant, beer and wine consumption on premises only, with a proposed usage restaurant with a retail, sales, convenience, good, accessory use. The current active A B ordinance on the site is ordinance seven-five-two-nine dash A, and it's for eight hundred and eighty-four square feet. It's a two A P S, which is beer and wine package sales only. Site's historical record shows the current use on the property as retail trade, and the total A B sales area is one thousand five hundred and ninety-one square feet indoor only. Required parking for a restaurant is point-two-five spaces per person, and the floor plan shows the total occupancy of forty-eight point seven occupants requiring twelve spaces. The remaining units in the strip center require thirty-four parking spaces, spaces which total forty-six required parking spaces, and the, the proposed site plan is showing forty-six provided parking spaces. The property is in the West Tampa Urban Village, and the distance separ, separation requirement is two hundred and fifty feet from A B, uh, I'm sorry, from other A B sales establishments, and the proposed hours of operation are consistent with chapter fourteen. The site plan states the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space, and all per, all permits issued after April first, twenty-eleven, shall be kept on-site, a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan for alcohol beverage sales. Land Development Coordination, as well as transportation planning, found the site plan inconsistent. Uh, the waivers that they're requesting before you for these inconsistencies come from section twenty-seven, one thirty-two, and that's to reduce the required distance separation to other A B sales establishments from two hundred and fifty feet to ten feet, and then section twenty-seven, two eighty-three point twelve, and that's to allow the reduction aisle width from twenty-four feet to twenty feet, and also twenty-seven, section twenty-seven, two eighty-three point twelve, to reduce the backup width from six feet to zero feet. Excuse me. The closest A B sales area is one, uh, one-zero-two-one North MacDill Avenue, it's zone C G, and it's for a small venue, beer and wine, uh, consumption on premise and package sales, and it's ten feet away. The property is located in the West Tampa overlay and is in the West Tampa Urban Village. Subject property is outlined in red, and the specific suite A's to the north of the property, the closest alcohol establishment that I was explaining in the staff report is, is the property directly to the north. This is the front photo of, uh, picture of the front of the establishment, as well as a backup photo showing the front parking area. Here's another picture facing east. This is the neighbor to the north. Below picture's neighbor to the, that would be the east. Neighbor to the south is on the top, and a view of the west. There are some minor corrections to the site plan needed between first and second reading that are outlined in the staff report, as well as the, the marked up site plan, and T P D, uh, found, but no objection to the special use. The staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Council? African?
Yes, sir, my name is David Cruz, and, uh, good evening. And we, we just requesting, as, we have a small restaurant, we just, uh, customer request trying to, uh, provide the sales of wine and beer.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number eight? Item number six. Anyone in public wish to speak on item number six?
Hi, good evening, my name is George Rush, uh, I'm here on behalf of myself and my wife, Jan Rush. We own the property directly across the street, uh, one thousand North MacDill. We've owned it since about nineteen ninety-five. About eight years ago, we converted the building from office zoning to daycare zoning, and it has been operating as a daycare continuously since, for, for about the last eight years. The, uh, conversion from office to daycare for a small building is expensive. The rule of thumb is fifty percent of the value of the building because of the security issues that have to be addressed, uh, the dining issues that have to be addressed, all the interior walls have to be taken out, playgrounds have to be installed. And we've done that, and it's, it's been successful. We, we, as landlords, rent to someone who is licensed to operate the daycare. These daycares, this particular daycare specializes in, uh, V P K and younger, which means, you know, four years or, or younger. And we're concerned that we would have a, a daycare so close to the applicant here. We're the, we're described in the papers as within a thousand feet, we're actually about a hundred feet. We're looking across the street at them, and, um, we see this could be detrimental to the building as a daycare entity. I mean, if you get a reputation as being too close to a, the wrong kind of, uh, alcoholic consumption site, you're out of business. I'm not suggesting that would happen here, but I don't know it wouldn't happen. And if that happens, if the daycare licensees leave, we've gotta pay, which would again be more than a hundred thousand dollars, to convert it back to an office. I don't, uh, you know, this is, you know, this is something we don't wanna do. So I would respectfully oppose this application for the reasons I've stated. For.
Can I ask you a question, Chair?
Yes, sir.
So where's your, where's the daycare at, is that the one that is, uh, just west of the, of the, of the place?
Yeah, you could see in the photos that.
Yeah, it's, it's across the street, correct?
It's across the street, I mean, we could, we could throw baseballs across the street.
Right.
And, uh, they.
Or if you had a good arm, you could.
Yeah, you would throw the baseball, I would catch the.
I don't think I could, my rotator cuff doesn't, isn't that good anymore, so.
Um, and you can see, and they, they, uh, have two or three buses, and they actually pick the, the children up, bring them there and take them back. And then they have a mixture, and sometimes they're open at night, it's a new thing that, uh, parents get a night off and you can leave the kids there.
Now, you, now, let me just ask you, so you're the landlord, not the owner of the business itself, right?
No, I'm the owner, we convert the building, I've talked to them as recently as today, but, um, we're the owner because the use, the building has to be converted for city purposes into.
I think you're missing my, my question, my question is, you, I thought you said when you came up that you're the landlord of the building and then someone operates the, the daycare, correct? So you're not the operator of the daycare, you're the landlord of the building?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I had that right.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and how long has that been, uh, there?
About eight years, the current tenant has been with us for eight years, and they took it when we converted it, and they run it.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's, I just wanted to get me clear on.
Right, yeah, and they are listed in the, in the, um, petition, it's, it's called the Fossil Learning Academy, and, um, you can see their little buses over there now.
Right, right, well, you know, it, it is kind of in an urban setting where they're at, there's some other safety issues that you might think of when you talk about a daycare, because they're on a fairly busy street, so, um, and I understand your point about, uh, the place across the street, but there's some issues, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, there's some other issues that are there too, that somebody might not wanna put their kids there for other reasons too.
Well, because most of the kids are picked up by buses, I mean.
No, no, I get it, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying that, you know, there's a lot of issues when you talk about an urban setting for, uh, for daycares.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you so much, I, I appreciate the answers.
All right, anyone else from the public wish to speak, um, item number six?
May I just ask a question of the staff?
Yes, sir.
So, just to be clear, there's already a package sales, uh, ability here, right?
It's correct, sir, it's from nine, December eleventh, nineteen eighty.
So, under the new guideline, under the new, what's being asked for, there will no longer be sales for off-premises consumption, correct?
Correct, it's only, uh, consumption on premises in connection with the restaurant, it's coming in as a restaurant, so they're gonna be a reporting restaurant to the city, and consumption on premise only.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
What, what, what is, uh, the hours of operation of the daycare?
They are consistent with chapter fourteen, stated on the site plan.
For the daycare?
Oh, the daycare, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, the gentleman that spoke with, uh.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the hours of operation for the daycare?
I couldn't.
Hours of operation for the daycare?
Uh, they are open, I think they start at s, I'm, I'm not the expert, but they start very early, six or seven. Uh, they run, um, I think to four or five, but I know they also do have the, um, nighttime service, 'cause I happen to have a grandson that, where they open up at night for parents who wanted to drop their kids off and maybe go out and maybe, I don't know what they're closing, but I guess nine or ten.
How often are these services at night?
Well, they're open, as far as I know, five days a week.
They have night services five days a week?
Oh, well, I don't know, I mean, I, I just know that I was inquiring of them, just mentioning to them that my grandson had that service, and they said that they also offer that service.
All right.
That's the extent of our conversation.
Thank you, any additional comments or questions?
I just wanna make a comment, I, that corner's in the northwest corner, and back in the, sometime back, uh, that, that was owned by a police officer named Daniels, I forget his first name now, he retired and moved to, it was a residential home. It was three-one or three-two, and, uh, didn't have none of that brick on the outside, it was just a common residence. And then somehow it rezoned back, I guess in the eighties. But before that, it was a residential, I think it's Daniels, he was a police officer, retired and moved to somewhere in the, uh, Carpent Springs area. That's all I can remember about that.
All right, and petition? Sir, 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 no, 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 it's, that's your time, you, 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 you can take a seat. All right, African?
Yes, sir. I understand his concern, uh, and I want to address his concern, uh, the daycare, it, I believe is, is, is a four-lane, uh, vehicle lane, uh, uh, between both properties. So I think that the daycare will be, you know, for them to be able to get to the, to the restaurant, or any other child, or any person taking care of, in the childcare, I don't think it will be a, a, any, you know, to cross that four lanes to get to the restaurant, it should be in a space. I'm not sure if I'm, I'm in the right plane or not, but also, the restaurant is a small restaurant, we are sold tacos and, and beer, we're not gonna, I don't think it's big enough to be able to attract any type of crowd that will intervene for any operation of the childcare.
What is your average crowd on a weekend?
Excuse me?
What is your average crowd on a weekend?
Correct, we, we won't be that, yeah, I don't think, we only hold, uh, what was it, forty-eight tables? No, no.
Ryan Manassi Land Development, it's, uh, stated on the floor plan, forty-eight point seven occupants.
Yeah, forty-eight occupants, so it's, it's not a big place compared to all the, uh, clubs and restaurants in the area.
All right, any questions for the African? Uh, anyone else wish to speak from the public?
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion, close.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Miranda, I wanna figure that motion's in.
Aye.
Close, it was a pleasure, Council.
I'll read it, see where it goes, Mr. Chairman. File number six, AV219-06. Present an order for first reading consideration, ordering approval of special use permit as to for alcohol beverage sales restaurant consumption on premise only, making lawful to sell beer and wine at or from the certain lot, plot, or tract of land located 1001 North MacDill Avenue, Suite A, Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section Three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict are repealed. Repealing ordinance number 7529A, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, good motion from Mr. Miranda Santos, Mr. Suarez. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Move opposed?
Motion carried with Kepin being an abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption will be March 21st, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
All right, go to item number seven.
Good evening, counsel. LaShawn Doc, Planning and Urban Design. Counsel, item number seven is a special use. This is SU21901. This is for the properties located at 1301, 1305, and 1307 North Jefferson Street, and 802 East Laurel Street. The request before you is for air-conditioned storage. The applicant is Brom Storage LLC, being represented by John Grandoff. We have David Haye here with the Planning Commission. I'll let him come up and give his report, and once he is finished, I'll come up and make my presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. David Haye with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, this one and only special use tonight is in the Central Tampa Planning District. It's within proximity to our Transit Center, and it's in the Central, Central Business District Employment Center, as outlined on the, on the map. I have the zoomed-out version. This is the subject site right in the center. It's at the off-ramp of I-275, just to the west of the Burger King. It is, the subject site, to the west of the subject site is the designated intermodal transit facility owned by the state. Then you have Oaklawn Cemetery. This is Orange Avenue as it comes down into downtown. You have Perry Harvey Senior Park to the east, and then you have the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church to the south. We're all kind of familiar. This is Encore over here in the GTE building. You can see that's the interstate there. Here we have the future land use map. The subject site and all this brownish-red color, that is the Central Business District land use category. You've got some actual, a small pocket of this dark brown is Res. 83, that continues up into Tampa Heights. The green here is recreation open space. That's related to Perry Harvey Senior Park. Then over in Encore, that's that regional mixed-use 100. The GTE is the urban mixed-use 60, and then you also have the community commercial 35 as you go up, up toward Tampa Heights. The Planning Commission has looked at this, and under existing zoning regulations and air-conditioned storage use, that is to be located within the Central Business District, has to be located north of Harrison Street and also be located within a mixed-use structure requiring residential uses, and the air-conditioned storage use cannot exceed forty percent of the total building square footage. These regulations were developed in part to implement comprehensive plan policies regarding development in the Central Business District. The proposed development's overall square footage consists of primarily air-conditioned storage. The applicant is seeking to waive the requirement that would require the inclusion of residential consisting of sixty percent or greater of the structure. This waiver is inconsistent with comprehensive plan policy. The area north of Harrison Street in the Central Business District is home to the Marion Transit Center and is planned as the location of the future downtown intermodal station. The Central Business District is also identified as a business center in the comprehensive plan with specific policy language regarding the promotion of transit use by encouraging new economic development to take place in the form and density that supports transit, unquote. And air-conditioned storage use by its unique operating characteristics would typically not be deemed as a use that is supportive of transit usage. The comprehensive plan supports a mixed-use development pattern around major transit stations that provide residential opportunities and would be supportive of increasing transit ridership. The approval of the proposed special use that is predominantly storage would be moving away from the policy direction outlined in the comprehensive plan, and those policies are provided to you in the staff report. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed special use request inconsistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation.
Ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. You, you mentioned about that being reserved for FDOT multimodal center, that one parcel that's next to it.
Right.
So, based on everything that you're saying, is that we're, we should have a different kind of development pattern there because, not because, only because of that, but because of other issues too? Is that it, or...
Well, the main focus out of the policy language was developing that uses around those facilities because there's not only the designated intermodal, but there's the existing Marion Transit Center, that's the hub for Heartline.
Right. So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Where, the policy language is specific that, to support those transit and that investment in those facilities, the city should be providing uses that are supportive of creating people that will use the facilities.
Got it.
And a storage use just doesn't...
And storage is not for storing people. That's all we, we know, okay.
It doesn't get people on transit. Usually they're not from...
It shouldn't be.
Yeah, they're not coming to the storage facility on transit, usually lugging stuff to it. It's usually a drive-to destination, yeah.
So, and, and I just want to make sure I'm clear about this because earlier today we were talking about transit-oriented development and some other issues in terms of changing land uses and then zoning specifically for TOD. Obviously, a parcel like that is a, a, kind of a designated place as part of the underlying land use designation for something like TOD or something in that, in that manner, correct?
Yes. I, I mean, there's, right now, there is an official designation in, in the comp plan. I know everyone's working on that, but this would be probably the most ideal site for one of those TOD overlays due to the invest, the existing investment and, and what's anticipated with Brightline's arrival, anticipated arrival into Tampa.
Well, and would I be wrong to say that when we're, when we're talking about a large parcel of land like that, especially with the extension of the streetcar, it's a possibility that that may be part of another piece of a transit-oriented development type of design?
Yes, and it may in the future be incorporated into other parcels. I know FDOT is looking at the reconfiguration of the intersection. There's different ways of how that's going to play out, so the parcel may be all roadway in the future. It may be a part of a much larger parcel if they're able to reroute the roads through there.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Haye.
Sure, thank you.
LaShawn Doc, Planning and Urban Design. Counsel, there are a few items I'd like to review with you regarding process with this application. First, the request before you is a special use to for the use of an air-conditioned storage. This property is located in the Central Business District. Since it is in the CBD, prior to permitting, there are certain design district standards that must be met. If those standards cannot be met, the applicant must apply for design exceptions to those standards. In this case, through a separate process, the applicant has a pro, has applied for design exceptions. Those exceptions will be reviewed administratively by the zoning administrator. Those exceptions would be denied. The applicant will apply for an appeal hearing. So on the site plan that you have before you, you will see special use waivers and design exceptions. We can only discuss the special uses because we are here tonight for the special use case. The design exception waivers are on, the design exceptions are on the site plan because the special use site plan and the, and the design exception site plan must be consistent for permitting purposes. At the appeal hearing, that is the time when we can discuss the design and the design exception elements. And that is scheduled to be set around May 8th. So should counsel decide to approve this application this evening, the second reading should be scheduled in May with that appeal hearing.
That does create a bit of a logistical complication. Because you're going to have different...
It doesn't happen often, and the only reason I went into it...
You're going to have an entirely different set of people sitting up here on the second reading, number one.
Yes.
And number two, well, that's, I guess that's number one and number two.
The last one we had, counsel...
Ms. Kurt, is that, maybe that doesn't matter, but it, that seems to me problematic.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I don't think it's legally problematic that you're going to have a new counsel hear the design exception and, and hear the case on second reading because second reading allows for an entirely new public hearing. I do want to, this is an unusual process because when you hear a special use process, the only waivers that you can hear are to the specific special use criteria. You can't grant waivers to setbacks or design standards or heights or anything like that. Sometimes, you can through the AB process for parking only, but that's only because it's actually also a specific criteria. So every time you hear a special use, it's only the specific criteria that you can waive. If they need anything else, they have to go through a special, a different process. This one adds another layer of complications because the, because they need some design exceptions for the plan that they're proposing. That ordinarily is not a problem, except we don't grant design exceptions until a use is approved, and they don't have the use approved. So that's why we're in somewhat of a unique procedure here. This is much like a case you heard earlier, the Burger King downtown, so this is a process that you have done before. But I do want to make it clear, I, I've talked to the applicant. They understand what the process is tonight. They also understand that they still hold the burden to prove, to get past first reading that they, that the applicant always in a special use permit has. It's not an automatic approval. You don't have to approve it tonight. The applicant still has to meet the burden to prove that they meet the criteria, and they're asking for specific waivers tonight that you also have to consider like you would for a normal special use permit. But I want to make it very clear that if city council moves this forward on first reading because of the unique circumstances that we have here, that in no way is an endorsement on any of the other site plan issues related to other design exceptions that they may need to be asking for, and that is part of the confusion. It's inherent in this process tonight, and it would be with any special use permit you had that needed a design exception. I think it's appropriate to go forward if city council is comfortable with it, but it does not remove the burden from the applicant to prove that the application, as they're presenting to you, meets all the typical general requirements for the special use process, and also, since they're asking for waivers, the applicant also has the burden to prove, and by waivers, I mean the special use specific criteria waivers, they still have to demonstrate to you that they meet the general criteria to get those waivers. And if there are any questions as we go along, I'm happy to do my best to try to clarify.
I just want to follow what Mr. Cohen said. I, I understand what you're saying legally. The probabilities, maybe, but there could be seven new members here. There's going to be four for sure. So how would you like to come in new and face this?
City council, I understand what you're saying. I might not make the same choice as the applicant tonight, so perhaps we could ask the applicant before we spend any more of everyone's time that's here tonight whether or not they're willing to waive any procedural processes that may come from having a different council hear this case. They may not, maybe they prefer a continuance. That's certainly appropriate as well.
Can I... Does it, does it really matter? Because if it's there, this is new to us, so it's going to be new to the new council.
City council, I think it's legally appropriate for it to go forward on first reading tonight and have a new city council play this, apply the same rules in second reading, but I do understand what everyone's saying, and I think it's appropriate that the applicant, you know, gets on the record that they understand that and they want to proceed, and they're not going to raise anything later that we did anything inappropriate by having two different councils hear it.
Good evening, members of council. John Grandoff, Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza, on behalf of Broome Capital. I totally understand what Ms. Kurt has been explaining and also what Ms. Doc has been explaining also. Under the char, under the charter, the city council is the body that passes on land use matters, whether it's this seven members or it's another seven members. That is the risk of, of democracy and operating under a city charter. So I totally understand that, and we're prepared to go forward tonight.
I agree with you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, yes. City council, with regard to this, the practical implications of going forward tonight and then have a, at least four new members, would be that the second reading would be a more involved hearing, just as it would be tonight. It would be a, the opportunity, actually a necessity, for the new council members to be able to have the benefit of the information that's normally spent a good deal of time at the first reading. This one will require probably another full public hearing to bring the others, the other council members up to speed. And also to follow up on what Ms. Kurt said, with regard to the criteria, your staff report on page five and six only lists Part B. Actually, you, you have actually on page four and five are the 27-129B. I'm going to direct your attention also to 27-132 in the staff reports to regulations governing individual special uses, and that is specific to this case with air-conditioned storage. So that being said, I'm also going to distribute to council the general standards under Section 129 Sub A, in addition to what you already have, and also, Ms. Kurt made reference to the waiver criteria for a special use on a site plan controlled rezoning, so I'm going to pass that out to you, so you'll have that in front of you as well.
You know, I'm going to say something. When I was appointed in 2010, there was a second reading on my first meeting. Yes, and I was given piles and piles of information, and then I was asked at my first reading if I was ready to proceed. So I think the new council can handle it. Thank you. I did.
I'm not saying they can't handle it, but you were one of seven. There are going to be four of seven.
At least four of seven, yeah.
Okay, thank you, counsel. LaShawn Doc, Planning and Urban Design. Counsel, this application has been reviewed by the DRC staff and finds it inconsistent with applicable city of Tampa land development regulations. Site plan modifications are required to be made between first and second reading. I have provided you with a list of site plan modifications. This list has also been provided to the applicant, and they do agree to make the requested changes between first and second reading. The current use on the property is vacant. The proposed special use is for air-conditioned storage. This project proposes an 11-story structure with the first floor containing office and lobby uses totaling 4,410 square feet. The second through 10th floors would contain the AC storage units for a total of 880 units, containing 113,499 square feet. The 11th floor would contain the recreational facility use, private recreational facility, containing 7,336 square feet. The total building square footage is 125,245 square feet. There are two special use waivers requested with this project, and they are under Section 27-132. The first waiver is to allow mixed-use projects without residential use. The second waiver is to allow the AC storage use to exceed the project's square footage allowed from a minimum of forty percent to ninety-one percent. And counsel, this site, as you're aware of, it is a block that has a different shape. This is a three-sided block, and it is located on the northeastern portion of the district, just south of the I-275 and I-4 corridor. The site has Jefferson Street to the west, Orange Street is south to the, and to the east, and Laurel Street is to the south. The plan proposes vehicular access with ingress and egress points on Orange Street and on Laurel Street. There's ground-level parking proposed with that parking located on the western portion of the site. And the site is surrounded with the use of Burger King to the north, the drive-in restaurant. The park is to the... the park is to the east, a church use is to the south, and the city's parking lot is to the west. And Council, on page two of the staff report, you'll find staff's findings. Staff has the finding of inconsistent relating to the special use waivers requested. The special use criteria under Section 27-132, the first criteria for air-conditioned storage states that the use may only be established within a mixed-use project that contains at least two uses, one of which must be residential. And this project does not propose a residential component, and staff has concerns regarding that, given that the site is a vacant site. The second request for, of waiver for Section 27-132, is the code states for air-conditioned storage that the use shall not exceed 40% of the project's square footage. And the proposed A C unit use would actually cover over 90% of the building. The staff has concerns with that. And I have the zoning atlas for the property. This is the property outlined in red. So the orient, this is Jefferson Street, this is Orange Street, and this is Laurel. And this is it within CBD one. And this is another view, zoomed out. This is the, the property outlined in red, Jefferson Street to the west, Orange Avenue, and Laurel Street is to the south. And pictures of the site, um, I start at Scott and Jefferson, and then work our way south. This is located north of the site. This is the Burger King. This is west of the site, which is the city parking. This is heading south, so this is the view on Jefferson Street, this is looking southeast. So this is the north end of the site. This is heading further south, this is still on Jefferson, this is looking east. This is the view looking south on Jefferson. This is south of the site, that's Greater Bethel. This is another view south of the site. This is a view of the park east of the site, this is at Orange and Harrison, this is near the south end of the park. This is another view of the park east of the site on Scott, this is looking southwest. And then circling back around, this is the eastern portion of the site, and this is at Orange and Laurel. This is looking northwest, and you can see the interstate in the background. And that concludes our presentation. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Before we go to public comments, we want to pause, and we can do a spec, special recognition.
Mr. Miranda, you, you said it like a real stage manager back there. Get up there, come on.
These are young kids that really do great work. They, uh, I don't think they're gonna speak, but if they speak, you're in a system, they memorize all that. We do this every yearly, Mr. Chairman, as you well know, and, uh, Mr. Frank Smith is the gentleman in charge of the Oracle process at Post Five, and he threw today with the, uh, two individuals that he'll speak about.
Okay. I'm Frank Smith, I'm with American Legion Post Five, I'm the post and district, 15th District, which is Hillsborough County Chairman, with the American Legion Oratorical Contest. And I'd like to thank the council for this, I believe it's about the 10th year, uh, thanks to Mr. Miranda, that they've sponsored honoring our contestants. We didn't have a lot of contestants this year, so without any further ado, I'd like to honor the ones that we have that are here. There's two of the six that participated in the post, district, and area level. So the first one we have is Adriana James Rodel. If you'd come up here. I'd like to present you with this plaque-
Thank you.
-on behalf of the city council.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
I would just like to thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Hamblin for hosting me at the Post Five American Legion, um, level, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak and give my thoughts on the American Constitution with this Oracle Toracle Contest, and I'm thankful that my father took me there and took me here tonight, so thank you all.
Okay, now we have the post, the contest is at, uh, three levels here honoring tonight. We're honoring the post level, and unfortunately, we just had one post contest this year in our district. So we had, uh, two other people in the contest, and the second level is the district contest. Uh, we had two people in our district contest this year, and then the area contest, which is Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Polk County, we only had, we had three people for that one. So the, the next one I'd like to honor tonight is Lance Lawson. Lance Lawson was sponsored by Post 111, and, and Al Garcia, please come up here with him. I'd like to present this to you. Al's the chairman for Post 111, and Lance here is a student at Becher Christian. And he came in, he, he came in second at the district level, and because the district chairman could not make the area contest, he, he came in, uh, got the bronze medal at the, at the central area contest. Go ahead.
All right, well, I'd like to thank, um, my parents first and foremost, um, they've been of the utmost support, uh, all my life, and they've made this possible. I'd like to thank my school, who encouraged me to do this in the first place. I'd like to thank Post 111, who sponsored me. I'd like to thank the American Legion as a whole for just being an awesome organization. And I'd like to thank Tampa to, for being such an awesome home for me for the past 12 years. Thank you.
Okay, and for the record, I'd like to just read the names of the other four. The other four that were, that participated this year, and I, I don't believe there's any parents here. No. Okay, so the other four, we had Sydney Lohman, who's a senior at the Academy of the Holy Names. She was the silver medal winner at the Post Five contest. Then we had the winner of the Post Five contest, the winner of the 15th District contest, Greta Deek, who's also a senior at the Academy of the Holy Names. And we have the, the, uh, silver medal winner at the third level, which is the area contest, is a Joseph Corley. He's a student at Riverdale High School, and he was sponsored by Paradise Post 79 in Port, in Newport Ritchie. And, oops, excuse me, did I say that right? Yep, I, yes, I did. And the winner for the central area, who'll be going on to the state championship, is Chad Stevens. He comes from Winter Haven, Florida, Post Eight. He was the winner of the seventh, both, both the Post Eight contest, the Seventh District contest, and the Central Area contest. And he attends Auburn Dale High School. And like I say, he'll be going to the Department of Florida contest next month. Thank you very much for this opportunity, for, like I say, this is the 10th year that we've been doing this with the council, and we hope to do it for many more years to come. Thank you.
All right, um, move to the applicant. Mr. Grandoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a nice break.
Yeah.
Good evening, John Grandoff, on behalf of Broome Capital. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Jordan Faralis, who's with Broome, and also Mr. Greg Roth, who is our engineer with Bowler Engineering. Greg's gonna come up in a moment and show the site plan to you, in a reduced form, and then, uh, Jordan is gonna come after Greg, and he's gonna explain to you some market research that he's done with air-conditioned storage and the demand downtown. And then Jordan will also show you the elevations that our architects have prepared of the air-conditioned, uh, storage and the, uh, private recreational facility that we will have on the top floor. You may remember, we met with you all back last summer, explaining this project and the two waivers, the two waivers we're requesting this evening. We have met all other, uh, special use general standards and specific standards, except for the two waivers, those being that it be a residential mixed use, and that the residential be at least 60%. To begin, let's first, I want to confirm that the revision sheet that Ms. Doc provided is acceptable to us, and we will provide those revisions, uh, during the interim before, between first and second reading. Jordan, if you'll come forward and read the reduced site plan. Oops, here, Greg's gonna come forward. Here's the, uh, site plan that we've had. And Greg, you just point out the general improvements that are projected.
Good evening, Gregory Roth of Bowler Engineering, 3820 Northdale Boulevard, and I have been sworn in. Um, as a civil engineer, I don't have much to talk about on this particular project. It's a third of an acre, and it's a triangle bound on three sides by public right-of-way. Um, Ms. Doc did a fantastic job, so I'm not gonna be redundant and repeat some of these, uh, site constraints that we had, but, um, from an access standpoint, we do have an access on Orange Street, and another access on Laurel. Uh, we're bound by a couple of one-way roads, so that was a, a bit unique from our standpoint. The, the parking and loading are on the ground floor underneath the structure, uh, and we will be meeting the stormwater requirements by going underground with a vault, that's also underneath the structure. From that standpoint, uh, as, as mentioned there, um, we've complied with as much as we could on a tight site, and if there's any other questions, I'll be here from a site standpoint, otherwise, Mr. Grandoff will take it away.
Thank you, Greg. Jordan Faralis, if you'll come forward, and please introduce yourself, and then Jordan will show you the elevations that he's prepared, and I'll hand out, um, yeah, to have a reduced copy, we can hand out to them.
My name is Jordan Faralis, 6911 Crystal Range Road, Tampa, Florida, I'm a director at Broome Capital. The elevations that you have before you as part of your packet that was presented to staff, uh, was an older version of a facade, uh, that we had submitted back in December, I believe. Since then, we met with, uh, the United Residents for Better Neighborhoods of Tampa Bay, uh, as well as the Drana, the Downtown River Arts Neighborhood Association. Uh, we met with Jason Ball of Urban Tampa Bay, and we met with Mike Pianessa of Drana. And we sourced feedback from them on our current design of the building. Neither had any particular issues with the uses that we were proposing. Uh, however, we did source various feedback from them on the aesthetics of the building. Um, and the revised elevations that you have before you tonight take into account those suggestions. You all have copies of this, if you'd share. Here's a new 3D, uh, rendering from Laurel, uh, facing, uh, on the south, facing north of the building. We have, uh, in excess of 70% of glass and transparency on the first floor. Uh, we have the new rooftop, uh, modern look, uh, to, to accommodate the rooftop event space, uh, and enhance that feature. Additionally, uh, for the, for the triangular point, uh, that's on Jefferson and Orange, uh, we have an all-glass, uh, basically triangular point, uh, to enhance the architectural, uh, element when you're driving off the highway into downtown Tampa past this facility. Uh, we think that the design elements are, are sharp, they're modern, they fit in with the design pattern, uh, of all the other high-rise developments that are going in downtown. Additionally, we hired a drone photographer to go up to the height of the 11th floor, uh, and take 360-degree photos, uh, from that elevation, and we superimposed those into a rendering of the rooftop event space, uh, from the top floor. So this is what you see here, uh, is the outdoor deck on that rooftop event space. Um, with the cemetery and, and the church, uh, there's great views into the skyline of downtown Tampa. Um, this is an evening shot here, um, and that'll be available for private events, weddings, birthdays, quinceañeras, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Jordan. As you can tell by the, uh, the last rendering we've showed, we wanted to make a statement about downtown, uh, to the point that, uh, it would be similar to the, uh, recreational facility that's on the top of the Beck Building near Armature Works. Now, we wanted people to one day say, have you been to the new building downtown? It's the one with the private recreation facility on top, that's got the beautiful western view. And we think that's the statement that will be made with this project. The, um, special use criteria in the code, uh, has been met in several, uh, several standards, uh, and I'll summarize them for you on your staff report on page four. You have to have ingress and egress, off-street parking and loading, refus and service areas, lighting, utilities, drainage. We've met those standards. Then the, the standards for air-conditioned storage downtown are as follows. On page five, uh, the first standard we're asking for a waiver is it must be two uses, one of which must be residential. The second standard is it shall not exceed 40% of the project's square footage. In other words, six of 10 floors must be residential, uh, and we're asking for a waiver of that. Continuing, uh, the code says the use must be integrated with structural system of the principal building. We've met that standard. No customer-related business or retail operations shall be permitted. We've met that standard. The use may be only located in the central business district on properties north of Harrison Street. We've met that standard, and that's important, because the drafters of the code decided to make a geographic limitation of air-conditioned storage, and they said north of, north of Harrison Street. We have done that, we've met that standard. Second, the use shall not be located at ground level, except the entrance and the loading functions can occur at ground level. We've met that standard on the top of page six. The storage of hazardous materials, et cetera, et cetera, is prohibited, obviously, we've met that standard. The, um, the code requires special use permission, excuse me, procedures, which apply in relation to the use, occupancy, location, construction, design, character, scale, manner of operation, or the necessity of making complex or unusual determinations, and to ensure consideration of particular circumstances in each case, and the establishment of such conditions and safeguards as are reasonably necessary for the protection of the public interest generally, and of adjacent properties, the neighborhood and the city as a whole. That is the intent of the special use regulation. We've had no opposition from any neighbors on this project, and I'll submit to you that in the downtown CBD district, these uses are permitted, and they are frequently found to be special uses around the city. Congregate living facility, hotels and motels, clubs, place of religious assembly. Alcoholic beverage sales is your, is your classic special use, because of all the, all the exterior effects of alcoholic beverage consumption. We just had a hearing this evening, just before us, about alcoholic special use. You see, air-conditioned storage is a special use, and then bank, bank drive-in, heliport, kennel, medical marijuana dispensary, radio and TV station, restaurants, all are permitted uses downtown. Medical marijuana dispensary, permitted use downtown. However, there's been a carve-out downtown, and the carve-outs are as follows. Alcoholic beverage sales, number one. Number two, air-conditioned storage, that's us. And number three, restaurant drive-in, which was the Burger King. So downtown, there are only three special use twos that come before you. Every other special use in the city is a permitted use downtown. So you have to ask yourself, what public harm or public safety issue were we trying to regulate when we said, you have to have residential, and it has to be at least 40%? I believe that is an illogical control of the use, and it makes no sense, given the map that has been shown to you as to the existing development in the neighborhood. It is replete with residential use. Here's the property, right here, this triangular piece, it's only 13,000 square feet. The residential use has taken care of itself downtown. What has not taken care of itself has been air-conditioned storage. And Mr. Faralis and his company have made the study, they have determined that there is a market demand for air-conditioned storage above and beyond this artificial restriction that's in the code, and we're asking you to approve a mixed use, which will include this- a mixed use, which will include this as an adjunct to our property to make it a mixed use and make it a compelling site that people will be proud about to come to Tampa and will tell you about it. Have you been to the new building downtown that has the beautiful facility on the top? Pardon me for one moment. I want to summarize my notes. Jordan prepared another study as part of his research, and he summarized this in an email to me, and he named several developments in the neighborhood, all very familiar to you, I'm sure. The Heights, the Pearl, which is just north of the Heights on Palm, Crescent, Riverwalk, 915 Franklin, going on and on and on and on. You'll see the type of use, but in unit count, just coming onboard, 3,500 units, and then in square footage count, nearly a million square feet of square footage. And we have no air-conditioned storage in this area. This is a significant amount of market demand, and the code gives you the authority to address that market demand. In the staff report prepared by the planning commission on page three in the middle, policy 3.1.16, CBD redevelopment, and this is one-third of an acre, should be a mix of residential, employment, and entertainment uses with ground-floor retail and service uses at key nodes and along major downtown corridors. So I ask you, so where does the air-conditioned storage go? It goes north of Harrison Street. That's what the code said. We're going there. We simply need two simple waivers from you this evening as to those requirements. I'll summarize. The last sentence of the staff report of the planning commission on page four says, "The approval of the proposed special use that is predominantly storage will be moving away from policy direction outlined in the comprehensive plan." We're simply talking about 14,000 square feet. This will use mass transit. People will come downtown to see this facility, especially on the top floor. We simply ask that you provide residents in the neighborhood the same benefit that others have. I have a letter from the residents of Franklin Street in which they state, "Dear City Council, the residences of Franklin Street is a condominium association of 40 owner occupied units at the northern end of downtown. This is immediately south of where Fly used to be, a few blocks away. The project referenced above is in close proximity to our residences, and if approved would directly impact our neighborhood. Consequently, the residents of Franklin Street Condominium recently reviewed the special use site plan for this facility. The board's opinion is that such a facility would be an asset to our neighborhood and residents due to the significant need for quality storage space in the north end of downtown Tampa. The planned meeting space on the top floor would also be a valued addition to our neighborhood. The residents of Franklin Street Condominium Association favors the project, has put forth the application, and supports its approval. Signed by John Christensen, Board President." I respectfully request your waiver of these two items this evening and approval of the special use site plan. I will remain available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Grandoff, you talked a lot about the zoning ideas. We actually have something here from the planning commission also. I mean, what is your answer to their inconsistency finding based on the comprehensive plan?
I believe it's narrow. I think it needs a broader view of the market. Yes, you do need transit, and you need transit facilities, but they're talking about 14,000 square feet of triangular property, which is on two one-way streets. The market has tested this property, and it has not come to the market for any other use, and this is a natural use. I believe the planning commission's finding of inconsistency is very narrow-minded.
Do you think it's narrow-minded because the plan that they have in place now hasn't been changed to meet some of the needs of some of the transit that might be coming to downtown area by virtue of what's, you know, by referendum, the other things that are happening? Is it possible that they might need to change their co- I mean, their conference plan?
I agree, and also I think it fails to consider the size of the property. You have to look at the size of the property when you're applying the plan, and I think that's a significant issue in this project.
When it comes to TOD and, you know, other transit-oriented developments, you know, they have a, I guess they have a range of different changes or kind of a, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the word that they use for it, but it's like a surrounding area that changes the entire area based on the fact that it's transit-oriented development there, meaning that a space even the size of your client's space could be transformed into something other than storage. I mean, that's the idea behind TOD, is, in my mind.
Right. But that's a market issue, whether the market will come to the property and want to put it to a TOD use. It has not. In fact, the market has come and said, "This is where you put air-conditioned storage." And I believe those two criteria you're waiving are arbitrary. What's the rationale behind them?
Okay, well, we're not, you're looking to waive those aspects, so calling it arbitrary is a different argument for a different time. So, I mean, if you're saying that you want us to agree to the waiver, calling it arbitrary is not really a good argument in my mind, okay? So, you've got to, you can't have it both ways. Do you want us to waive it? Don't call it arbitrary, because it's not arbitrary, it's based on our comprehensive plan and on our zoning, you know, ordinances, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. I tend to, you know, it's really, I kind of smiled when you brought up the residential because my first note was residential, and I think the market's getting overheated myself. I know that we had developers come in here to tell us that it was overheated in Los Angeles and in Miami, and they were not getting the big dollars that they get for these big projects. And that was told to us months ago. So when they talk about the residential component, I found that interesting because the numbers that you said that are already there, and, you know, we had that same, now the 40%, 90% storage, that one, that part, you're saying the market, what you're indicating is that the market is requiring it or needs it or wants it.
May I respond?
The same thing, you know, and the odd shape of the property. We had that same argument with Burger King. Nobody, that property was for sale for years, and nobody bought it until Burger King came. And then we had the Downtown Partnership come in here and say, "That's not the kind of restaurant we want downtown." I said, "I'm sorry, but people have to, you know, eat, you know, at a reasonable amount. Downtown cannot be, you know, four-star restaurants." So, and it's proven to be a great neighborhood asset. From the renderings here, of course, these are renderings. I tend to lean toward your argument in that the residential component is, it isn't arbitrary, but is it really necessary? And that's how I, that's the first thing I wrote down was residential with a question mark. So you made my argument for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you know, the comment is a question from council.
Oh, just, just an observation. I'm not against or for it. I'm looking at it as not meeting the requirement of the residential component, and I think that's very important. Let me say why. This is going to grow by 40%. There's 147 people a day moving into the Tampa area. I'm not saying totally in Tampa, in the Tampa area. What that means is that if you go back just 15, 20 years, I think there were 600, 700 people living in downtown Tampa. I think now, I forget what the figure is, but it's about 10,000 or 12,000. And if I remember the figures that I saw there real quickly, 109, 900, 1,000 square foot of dwellings for residential use, and I believe it was 3,500, one unit, or 3,400, something like that, units, that would not equal the expectation that's coming to downtown Tampa. When you factor in that on the water supply, we're looking to increase it so we can meet the needs of the water and expand the water plant, the two-shory treatment plant does not have to be expanded because it has capacity, but it has to be brought up to technology standards to make the cost of doing, we have to do with that water much safer and more economical for the taxpayers long-term. It is incumbent that we continue to build residence in the city, not only in downtown, but throughout the city, unless we're all wrong, and that means the planning commission, the people in the water, the people in two-shory treatment, we don't do that, we're going to have a problem. And Tampa was a sleepy city, and then I come here because we're elected, the seven of us, and the mayor. They come here for only two reasons. You know what they are? There's only two seasons here, Christmas and summer, and that's how it is. So we have been recognized throughout the world, and what's coming now is the seed that was planted by individuals that are no longer here 20, 30, 40 years ago, and that's opened the door to the gateway to have a wonderful life and a nice living. Low crime compared to others. Affordability, not fashionable, it's not what it used to be, but you compare it to other cities in the state of Florida, it's more acceptable here than somewhere else. And those are the things that I'm not against the project, but I certainly would like to see more residential anywhere in the city of Tampa, because without this heart being downtown, the city is not going to function well. And this is spread out, it's already been spreading out, and I believe all the figures that were put up. However, when you look at the residential component, even around Dale Mabry, even around the airport, there's all types of residential units that have been built, multifamily, apartments, you name it, they got it. When you look at Cass Street, when you look at Cypress Street, when you look at anything leading into downtown, the main thing is residential. And yes, they need areas to go shopping in, but without mass of individuals living there, those commercial businesses cannot make it. So therefore, you have to have the residential first, and then comes the business component. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I know the number, and Mr. Day brought it up to my attention this afternoon. Over 600,000 people will be moving into Hillsborough County in the next 25 years. So yes, we need residential. However, the reason that there's residential along Boy Scout and the rest of it, because there was zero residential, and we had 50,000 to 70,000 people coming into West Shore to work, they had nowhere to live. So we approved many, many, many units there in the past, since I've been here, which is almost nine years. However, I do, now, we are looking at a tower that's going up along the river next to the Strad Center, that's on a parcel of land that's the size of a postage stamp, and it's 40 stories or 30 stories or whatever they propose, which they still haven't built, and I don't know that they ever will. So, because the financing, the financing is crucial in all of this. So I, you know, I understand the residential component, but I don't, I also understand what the parcel and the need for the air-conditioned storage in downtown. We have all these units, and there's nowhere to put your, all your stuff you save. So anyway, thank you.
All right, we'll go to public comments.
May Mr. Faralis respond to Mr. Miranda's question about the square footage and the unit count?
If you'd be pleased.
Go ahead.
I actually just wanted to clarify one thing on the email where I had the unit count of the residential units coming online in downtown and the surrounding area. That's just outside of the Strategic Property Partners project, which also includes an additional 3,500 residential units. So in total, there's 7,000-plus residential units in planning or under construction for Tampa Heights and the Commercial Business District. And with the Tampa average, and that's just within a one-mile radius of the subject property, which according to ESRI has a population within the one-mile radius of 15,800. With the average Tampa household size of 1.9, those 7,000 units are going to add another 13,300 people, nearly doubling the population of downtown in the near term. And there's only one self-storage facility with less than 20,000 square feet in channel side to fit the need of those people that are going to be moving in there. And last year alone, ages 20 to 34, there were 17.8 million people who moved across the country, and one in three of those people used self-storage as part of their move. So not only is this, you know, providing an outlet for people who are moving to Tampa, which ranks seventh in net migration from 2015 through 2018, it's an accessory to neighborhoods and for people who are moving to the city, transitioning for jobs and whatnot.
Any questions? So then, sir, are you saying then that Tampa has reached the downtown area with 3,500 and 3,500, 7,000, the maximum you think that is needed?
No, I'm just stating that there are 7,000 units coming online, and there is, which will nearly double the population, which just further increases the demand for self-storage just due to the migratory nature of people moving into the city.
Let me ask you another question, sir. Are any of these apartment units having their own self-storage anywhere?
I'm not sure which projects are and which aren't. I just know that as residential developer ourselves, we build townhomes and other single-family, we're constantly trying to increase the density with the, to overcompensate for the increasing cost of land and development costs with tariffs and whatnot. So we're shrinking, you know, the units, increasing the living area, and shrinking the storage space, so.
All right. But Tampa's still the largest city east of the Mississippi and growth.
All right, sir.
Can I have the applicant remove your...
What, I'm sorry, what was that?
It's a, it's a, yeah.
It's a, it's a, move over.
Oh, okay.
It's automatic, it just looks right at you.
Oh, okay. Am I allowed to read? Okay. My name is Brian Ray. I actually live in Orlando, not in Tampa. Good evening, City Council. As the owner of the subject properties, which are slated for the mixed-use project by Broom Capital, I'm requesting you approve this project for the following reasons. Self-storage is a permitted use per Table 184 of the city's zoning code and generates a very low volume of vehicular activity, which is beneficial regarding minimizing roadway congestion. Self-storage is a functional need of the community, as Jordan just spoke of, because there are in fact over 7,000 residential units that are planned to be built within the next several years here, of which I have some documentation to allocate that that is actually correct numbers. And when these are built, all within approximately one mile of the site, those units are going to need self-storage. Sir, you asked a question about whether self-storage is integrated into some of these residential projects. Yes, it is, a very minute amount. There is a lady here that was going to speak on behalf of the project, and she can attribute that. Yes, some is, but the cost is usually double the amount that a self-storage facility like Jordan brings in.
But I then turned this around on you, sir, and say that the same thing applies to self-storage in apartments, that the cost of the land is more applicable to build storage in apartments.
Okay, sir.
Is it true or not?
That the cost of the land is what?
Because of the cost of the land, and I'm not against this project, but you made a statement to me on stockparts that doubled in apartment buildings. My answer is then to you, sir, is that it not true then that to build self-storage, it's much more beneficial than to build apartments on the ratio of cost?
Not necessarily. They're trying to build a higher-rise self-storage.
The same thing was not necessary in apartments and dwellings.
Okay, sir.
Thank you very much.
The recreation facility event venue designed for the project is a permitted use by code as well and will be available to the community for weddings, corporate events, and more. The parking for these events is immediately available at the adjacent surface lot recently constructed by the city of Tampa. The property is located within Development District North, which per Section 27181 of the zoning code provides the city greater flexibility regarding use of future developments. This opens the door for the city and council to allow self-storage to be combined with event venue instead of the code-required multifamily, which as we've demonstrated, there is a high volume of multifamily already coming online, and therefore, there may not be a need for multifamily at this particular location. And to those who oppose the project...
So these being non-contrary, and I agree with the Planning Association or the Planning Commission about it being inconsistent. And this group feels the same way, and they have Realtors on that as well. The applicant had said that Drana had supported it, and they actually didn't support it, and they were, came to our meeting as they have ex officios there and were adamantly opposed to it. With that being said, I wanted to share that information with you is that RCAC doesn't feel like this is in compliance with what the envisioned for the downtown CRA and did not want to support the project.
Ms. Chairman, Board Members, Tom Pressman, 334 East Lake Road, Number 102, Palm Harbor, Florida. I'm here as an agent for South Forsite Storage. I'm handing a letter out to you from the Channelside District Community Alliance, who is a designated residential neighborhood association, who note in the letter they stand unanimously in opposition to this project citing specifically the residential mixed concerns and the other concerns which are being presented to the city. In great respect to Mr. Grant, my friend, Mr. Randolph, and the developers, you can have storage here. This is not a yes or no. They just don't want to comply with a critical aspect of providing a portion of residential on this project. In fact, in our opinion, if you go through a checklist of requirements through the waivers and everything else they're asking, they all check no. That's why you have denials from the zoning department, denials from the planning commission, denials from the transportation department, opposition from the Channelside District, which, looking at a Google map, is about the same distance to the Franklin that, with respect to Mr. Randolph, showed, and also from your CRA representatives. But the all-encompassing aspect here and critical factor is a residential component. Again, they can have a residential component, and I don't think market standards or market demands typically are supportive element. But that is a 100% waiver, Ms. Chairman of Board Members. They're asking for virtually no residential when they have to have a majority of the project as residential. If you look quickly on a Google map and just Google for public storage in the downtown area, you can quickly see that there's a lot of storage facilities. And you know what? They set them up in areas where you can do complete storage and no residential. They're located in the correct, in what we consider to be the correct places. So I don't accept, it's our opinion, we don't accept the issues of market and demand. We believe there's plenty of it. It's part of the reason why I'm here. When you look at the reasons for including a residential element, it's critical because these uses become a dead space, no activity. So particularly in this area where it's planned to be an environment or an economic generator as a transportation center, in our opinion, the last thing you want is a huge dead area with one, I think it's 1% of activity outside of storage. So with great respect again to the applicants, and not referring to the waivers, which are extreme within themselves, we appreciate your attention, and we stand strongly against this issue, as do the citizens in your staffs. Thank you.
Morning, Council. My name is Chris Vella. I live at 9241 Half, East 11th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33605. I'm a resident of historic Ybor City. I'm also president of the Neighborhood Association. This is really disturbing project. I definitely think that you need to deny any special use, I need, and especially deny any type of waiver attachments. I think we're here today, even though this might be a continued business to the new council, is to make, basically draw a line in the sand of what type of development is acceptable. Clearly, you heard from staff here that this type of development, the way how it's being presented right now, is not going to meet the criteria of what we are, as residents, want as moving forward. It's not meeting the future use of this property. You probably could look at the envision plan that Mayor Buckhorn rolled out. I don't think it's littered with parking garages. It was just disturbing that there was a comparison about Burger King as a justification. And that's, and that's what the heart and soul of this issue is. If you guys approve something that doesn't really meet our future use and also the needs of our downtown area, it just sets a tone for other people to follow in that low-quality type of development. Look at what happened in Dr. King Boulevard. There was a storage unit approved over there. There could have been tremendous amount of opportunities that it could have occurred in East Tampa in terms of businesses and places to live. We can say the same thing with North High Park. If you guys recall, there was an approved parking and storage unit over there in a heart of an area where you have a lot of families, you have a lot of students over there that are seeking housing. We have thousands of people that are lining up for affordable and just general housing opportunities and also businesses. We are in a downtown area. There's, this should be no discussion at all approving like a storage unit. If someone decides to live in a particular neighborhood, they, they're faced with choices, and they have to make certain sacrifices for certain gains. What that means is that if you're living in a downtown area, you're going to have a compact lifestyle. There is just no other way around that. So while I sympathize that there is a marketplace to have like that suburb in touch with urban living, in no way that I think anybody here is disputing that you can't have storage units anywhere, but what we don't want is any storage units in prime real estate area downtown Tampa. I'm going to just touch base on a couple of things here. This area is very sensitive. My father actually lives in Encore. He's not going to find any use for this development. And just remember that this area was completely annihilated, disregarded by the city and FDOT. I think there's opportunity now that we are moving forward to have transit and better housing, that we can turn this area around and actually create a lot more connections, not only to Ybor, but just to everybody and their quality of life. So just consider that. Don't move forward with this, please. Thank you.
My name is Ian Phoe. I'm here representing Aerial Innovations, which is a business that has documented the growth of Florida and Tampa specifically, from the air and from the ground, for 32 years now. I'd like to talk a little bit about the job creation that a business, or a development like this would create, both in the short-term construction and the long-term with the event space. As a media professional, as a photographer and videographer, working for the last 10 years here in Tampa, the availability of jobs in event spaces like this, weddings and quinceañeras and parties like that, is somewhat limited by the oversaturation of the media market right now. So the more event spaces that we have, the more jobs and creative professionals we allowed to come to Tampa. On a personal note, I'm a Tampa native. I've lived here my entire life. I've moved several times in the last years, and I think that self-storage is a necessary component of apartment and moving from place to place for young people, and anything that can support and encourage the residential growth of the downtown area would be beneficial to the city as a whole. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brett Snowden, and I serve as the pastor of Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church on 1207 North Jefferson Street, and serve at least 250 families. And we come tonight to offer our opposition to the storage facility being placed on the site because it actually is between the church and Burger King. And right now, we agree with the city planners in terms of their opposition, as well as the fact that we, we have a parking problem and a traffic problem in the area already, and we think that this would produce an additional concern in terms of traffic, in particular with our young people. And the last item I would address is that we have a, a real major concern right now with the homeless population who camp, who camps out no longer at the bus station, but they camp out at our church, which therefore, we think that it'll also draw more transients to the area as well to camp out. So we stand tonight to oppose the project as put forth.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mark Adams. I serve as chairman of the trustee board for Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. I just want to, you know, say that I also stand in opposition of this project for just common sense reasons. We all know how difficult it is to move, you know. I mean, who wants to move 11 floors with a heavy bed upstairs? That doesn't make any sense. When the elevator goes out, you know, it can be a pain just to simply move boxes and whatnot. So that alone is, doesn't quite make any sense to me in my mind. Also, if you look at the development around Tampa, you have enough rooftop businesses that are going on. You, you see them all over the skyline. This would just be another project, if you will, where you would have another rooftop business, which in my mind doesn't necessarily add anything of more value to downtown Tampa. Also, another concern that I, I have too, as well as the special use on top of the building itself, you know, what's to say that, you know, these parties or soirees, whatever the case may be, you know, they don't get out of hand? You know, people throwing objects from the rooftop onto church property. We already have a problem with regards to transits, like Pastor said, you know, they trashed the property. And I don't see anyone, you know, or has introduced a plan about, you know, cleanup aspect of this operation and what it would involve. Also too, it's, it's just kind of mind-boggling that, you know, Attorney Randolph said that they did approach individuals with regards to the use of, you know, possibly buying the property. No one knocked on our front door. We're right next door. You know, we've been 126 years, and you know, this is the first, we've heard of it in terms of what this is going to be a proposed project for. So that alone is face, to me, things just don't simply add up. And over time, I think we were made aware of that to, tonight, you're voting for a, an air conditioning project for storage, but this could change, you know, use over time. It may be a storage unit, you know, one moment at a time, and maybe something else completely different that would be in conflict with a, with a, you know, what we stand for as a church family. So with that, you know, being said, on a sensible standpoint and just, you know, in terms of the actual use of the space that has been presented tonight, I stand in opposition of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Dave. My name's David Luce. I'm here tonight as a resident versus a candidate for city council itself. When I look at this project, it doesn't check all the boxes that we envisioned for the future of Tampa. It does create a dead zone. It doesn't help with mass transit, doesn't help with attainable, affordable living, and if anything, it will actually cause more congestion because you can't take a bus to go pick up your storage unit pieces and take it right back. I also don't think it's an economic driver in any sense. Employment-wise, you're going to be looking at maybe a handful of employees, and then everyone else would be part-time caterers or catering that comes in. So I do oppose this project as it doesn't fit in with the general vision of the city and how we're going to be moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Carla Savedra, and I live at 1108 North Franklin Street. I am one block north of Harrison, between Royal and Harrison, Franklin and Tampa Street. As a condo owner and resident in downtown, we are in need of quality air-conditioned storage. As submitted the letter, the, our condo president, we do endorse this project. This facility is a half a mile to the east of our condo. As stated earlier, there is not air-conditioned storage unit north of Harrison. Additionally, the planned meeting space on the rooftop floor would be a welcome addition to the area. I want to also let you know, I am as well a member of Drana, which is the Downtown Resident Neighborhood Association, and I am for this project. So not everybody who's a member of Drana is against this. I am for it. I'm also a professional organizer, and I have clients that live in condos that are downtown, that live in West Shore, that live in South Tampa, West Chase, and air-conditioned storage is always something that we consider when we're organizing, downsizing, or relocating. And I ask that you please support this project to move it forward, to help grow the downtown area with all the condo projects coming online, and those that are online, like residents of Franklin Street. We've been there 12 and a half years, and we would love to have air-conditioned storage space north of Franklin Street. Thank you. North of Harrison, excuse me.
Yeah, Appuga.
Rebecca Kurtley, before you have final rebuttal, I just wanted to set the stage again of what the legal parameters are for what city council considers. Whether you approve this application or deny it, we want to be able to legally defend it. The air, the, the air-conditioned storage, I wanted to make sure I got the term of art right, is an allowable use in this area. They don't have to, the applicant does not have the burden to prove a need for it. It is not a legal basis for denial or approval that, that there is testimony that people feel there is a need for it, or don't feel that there is a need for it, or people would prefer an another use in this area. That's not a legal base for approval or denial. With a, the applicant does have the burden with a special use request. They don't get it as of right. They have the burden to prove that it meets your general standards, which have been provided to you. They also have to meet the specific standards, which they don't, so they're asking for waivers. The waivers, they also have the burden, they being the applicant, has the burden to prove that they meet the waivers, and that is also back to your general standard. So if they meet the general standards with the waivers, they've met their burden. But there was a lot of testimony tonight that I know is very important to the people who came here and testified, but it's not a legal basis for your decision.
Okay, all right. Appuga.
Yes, City Council, on rebuttal briefly, as Ms. Kurt explained, and I'll reiterate, we have met all the general standards and all of the special, specific standards, except to, those are the two waivers this evening that we've spoken to you about. The staff has not issued denials. They have made findings of inconsistency. They make administrative findings to you. You're the final decider on the projects. They're not denials in the record of Mr., I forgot his name, explained. I also find it inconsistent that, that Mr. Pressman's client is a storage company that's come to you in opposition to a storage project. This is an irregularly shaped parcel, as Mr. Ray explained to you. It is a development challenge, if there ever was one. It's a mixed use, which will respond to market demand. We've met with the downtown partnership. They see a significant need for the meeting space. This would be a landmark site. It was, the project is consistent with the tree and landscaping code. The lot, the lot size, the location, and the cost factors limit the uses. There are no dumpsters that are going to be staged in the right of way that you've heard on other projects before. The ingress and egress is very functional. We have no conflicts with traffic. It is safe. It is not a canyon effect with other buildings. And we're north of Harrison. The surrounding uses are not significantly impacted by this use. The apartment and townhouse builders are building smaller units because of development and budget, and thereby creating a demand for air-conditioned storage. You've had repeated testimony to that effect. I believe residents that live downtown have come to you, and that is significant testimony also. I urge you to approve this project, and I'll yield any further time to Jordan if he has anything he wants to add. With respect, I request your approval this evening.
All right. Any discussion, any comments from the council?
My good chair, just have a question of staff.
And I just want to make sure I get this right because of the way that Ms. Kurt had explained the standards, and I just want to make sure. So it has to meet the general standards, and the general standards that I see here are under 27-129, Sub A1, use will ensure the public house safety, general welfare, and so on. Oop, you left. Somebody's going to have to answer these questions because I'm figuring it out as we go along here, okay? That, too, the use is listed as a special use, and then we get into the special use nature of it after it meets its particular criteria in the general standard, correct? So we're, we're starting first with general standard, and then we'd start with special use, correct? Correct. Now, the question I have is under that same section, Sub A4. It says that the use is in conformity with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and we have a report from, from the Planning Commission, and it says that, based on the above considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds this proposed special use request inconsistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Does that mean, and I just need to ask this question, that it doesn't meet the general standard of number four? Correct. Okay. I just want to make sure I got that right because the wording is a little bit different. I want to make sure that there was no semantical difference in terms of what that means. So Mr. Randolph had said that all five of the standards were met, but they're not, based on the report that we got from the Planning Commission. I just want to make sure I'm correct about that. Correct. Okay, all right. Then we go into, into the special use, which is based on the air-conditioned use and the lack of residential in addition to, you see, air-conditioned storage, in addition to the criteria for 40% residential. Am I correct about that? That's one of the special use? Correct. Those are the special use regulations. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure because it gets confusing when you have a lawyer, no offense to Ms. Kurt, explain to you what's the, the, the general standards are and then the special use aspects of it. So I just want to make sure I was right about that in the discussion. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You want to respond? How much, how much time you got left on this?
I had.
How much time you got?
You want to respond to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's a, that's a small way to do it, I see.
Okay. Mr. Suarez, I want to clarify what I said.
Okay.
Go to page four of the report, the staff report. And you'll see in the, in the margin, it says Section 27-129, General Standards.
Right.
Okay. And then the second line says, "Of the case, the following considerations and standards shall apply generally, in addition to other standards or requirements set forth concerning the class or permit being considered." And you'll see that list, ingress and egress, off park, off-street parking and loading, refusings.
Let me stop you right there, sir.
Yes.
Because you are in a different section than what I had mentioned.
Right.
I was in Sub A, you're in Sub B, according to the report.
Right.
Okay, so that's, I did not ask about those.
Okay, well, I'm referring, those are the general standards that apply citywide.
No, I, I get it, but you're, you're not, you're not, you're not opining about what I said because I didn't say anything about those particular standards.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You know, a question or comments from council?
Another, you know, Councilman Suarez didn't talk about subsection three. You were referring to subsection four, correct?
I, I referred, if I could. Mr. Cohen, I referred to, I started to talk about what the general standards were.
Right.
And I mentioned specifically Substandard Four, A4.
Right. So I was going to ask about A3.
Got it.
Isn't this contiguous to the park, to the Perry Harvey Park?
LeSean, Doc, Planning and Urban Design. That is correct. Perry Harvey Park is to the, well, it's to the east of the site.
It's to the east, and it's a contiguous.
Well, it's right across the street.
Oh, and it's not. It's across the street.
Yeah.
So this is the park, this is the property in, in question that's outlined in red. So it's across orange.
I remember that when we were discussing the Burger King, one of the things that came up was the idea that people would have an opportunity to have a place to eat or get a drink next, next to the park. Storage next to a park, to me, I, to me, the compatibility argument for that use is not there. So I'm not, I, I guess my, my point is that I'm not sure how this meets criteria number three.
Paper grabs.
That's all.
So you paper grabs.
I'm sorry.
All right. Anything else from the court? Anything else from council? You get a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Manas Skakel saying about Mr. Randolph, closing the public hearing, all in favor of that motion, say aye. I would pleasure, council. Anybody?
I'll take that. Chair, if I could. I make a motion to, I guess, let me make sure I get the wording right. I make a motion to deny the, the special use on this under Section 27-129, Sub A4. The use is in conformity with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan as, based on the report from the Planning Commission, the recommendation is that it is inconsistent with the Planning Commission staff, excuse me, finding that the special use request is inconsistent with provisions in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Primarily, the, the section saying that the central district, this, excuse me, the 40% of total building, building square footage had to be, could not exceed what the total amount of storage was going to be. At this point, I believe this project is over 90% or 90%, and so it does not meet the criteria under our general comprehensive plan. In addition, under the, under subsection, excuse me, this is under Section 27-132, Sub A, that the project, the facility, the site is, hang on a second, I'm trying to read this here, that there is not a, it does not have at least two uses, one of which must be residential, that's not, is part of this plan, under Sub B, under the same section, that, well, what, Sub B is where we get the 90% air condition as opposed to the 40% which is required as part of the standard. So that would be my, my whole, my whole motion.
I got a motion from Mr. Suarez, talking about Mr. Manas Skakel, and a further discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye. Nay. Nay.
Motion to deny carried with Capin voting no.
All right. We go to information and reports. Mr. Deere.
None, sir.
Mr. Lorenz.
None, sir.
Ms. Capin.
Yes, here we go. I'd like to make a motion to present a commendation at the March 21, 2019, 9:00 a.m. meeting to Chuck Weber of the Water Department in recognition of water conservation.
I got a motion from Ms. Capin, talking about Mr. Manas Skakel, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, anything else?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm going to take this liberty to make this motion now because y'all ignore me at the end. I, I want to make a motion requesting the Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Plan Amendment Adoption be, what did it say? Read this.
Oh, you want me to read it?
Yeah.
All right. So the motion is, a request by the Planning Commission setting Plan Amendment Adoption Hearing for TA/CPA 18-14 on the evening of March 28, 2019 at 5:01 p.m.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Reddick, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Cohen.
No, thank you.
Mr. Suarez.
None, sir.
Motion to see him file.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Randolph, talking about Mr. Manas Skakel, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, to all you guys who was on the ballot on Tuesday, I wish y'all the best.
Thank you so much, Chair. We appreciate it.
Me too.
We will, we will be seeing you next week.
We'll see you on the Forsite.
We'll be, we'll see you next week. We will see who's smiling, who's not. We may have to say if you're there, but so we'll see.
Yeah, we'll all be smiling.
You know what? I mean, we'll see who's smiling, who's not smiling.